I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Berkeley, Michigan, Tuesday, August 13th, 2004. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. May we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. Member Krug?
Here.
Member McDonald?
Here.
Member Seer?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
Member Creel?
Here.
Vice Chair Allen?
Here.
And Sumik Alpine, Chair is absent.
Okay.
Quorum is met.
Quorum is met. Thank you very much. All right. Next item would be the confirmation, approval of the agenda. Anybody have any changes, deletions they'd like to make? If not, accept a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second?
Who's second? I'm sorry?
No, you.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item is the approval of the minutes for the June 10th, 2024 meeting. Any changes?
July 8th, 2024, Mr. Allen.
Hmm.
Does it say June 10th?
This one says June 10th.
My apologies. It's July 8th meeting.
Okay, July 8th. All right, I'll put that down.
So that's a correction on the agenda.
Other than changing the date to make it correct, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay.
I'll support it.
All right, we have a motion and a support. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Old business, we have none. New business. Number one is an application number PBA 1224, Stephen and Jennifer Naumann, 2274 Earlmont Road, parcel number 25-17-106-013, north side of Earlmont Road between Berkeley Avenue and Henley Avenue, requesting a dimensional variance of 2.38 feet to allow the construction of an addition to the east side of the dwelling and the required minimum side yard setback, total setback. The total for the west and the east side yard setback is 12.62, where 15 feet is required. Ms. Anderson, would you like to, oh, I'm sorry?
I need to just disclose that I do know Stephen and his wife, he went to school with my daughter. I have not had any discussion of the case with them or anything like that, but I know him through my daughter.
You feel confident that you could make an informed decision without being affected by that?
Yeah, I do.
I don't think we have a problem then.
Okay.
And I will say the same thing, that my son is, also knows them, and I feel the same way. I can definitely.
Okay.
If you guys feel you're impartial, I'm good with it.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Kim.
2274 Earlmont Road, parcel 042517106013, dates back to 1927 and is requesting a dimensional variance to allow the construction of an eight by 32.625 addition to the east side of the dwelling into the current required setbacks. Per Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, Zoning Article 5, District Regulations, Division 17, Schedule of Regulations, Section 138, 526 Table, R1D, Minimum Yard Setback, at least one side yard five feet, total of two side yards 15 feet. Existing side yard setbacks are, the west side is 2.32 feet and the east side, I have a correction I have to let you know about in regards to from my report. The east side is 18.3 with a total of two side yards of 20.62. I misread the, the plans where there was 5.7 and then cataliters of 2.3. I misread that. It is a total of eight feet there. So they have, it doesn't affect the variance request. The west side yard is non-conforming with the attached garage not meeting the five-foot minimum side yard setback and not meeting the 15 feet between adjacent dwelling requirement. The attached garage appears to have been originally constructed to the dwelling at the time of construction. The adjacent dwelling to the west, 2294 Earlmont Road, was built in 1940. Proposed side yard setbacks are west 2.32 feet and east 10.3 feet. Proposed total of the two side yards would be 12.62 with a deficiency of 2.38 feet to the required 15 foot per Chapter 138, Section 138, 526 Table, Schedule of Regulations, Minimum Yard Setback, total of two side yards is 15. Proposed addition to the east will remain to meet the required 15 feet between adjacent dwellings with a proposed total of 37 feet. All other setbacks are met. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance of 2.3 feet to add in addition to the east side of the dwelling where the proposed total of the two side yards is to be 15. For a variance to be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section 138, 606 of the zoning ordinance, based on findings of facts. We request the Zoning Board of Appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property and the applicant demonstrated a practical difficulty in order to grant a non-use variance. Motions for approval and denial are in your packets.
Very good. Can we have the applicants come forward and give us a little bit of background? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Naumann, this is my wife Jennifer. We're 2274 Earlmont. Quick little history about us and how we find our way into Berkeley. My great-grandmother grew up over, raised kids over on Elwood. My dad's parents over on Gardner, mother's parents over on Cummings. I grew up over on Griffith. My dad had worked for the school district for 47 years before retiring. My mom 24 years for the school district before retiring. My grandpa 25 years for the Berkeley Water Department before retiring. And now that leads to Jen and I over on Earlmont where we will be hopefully raising the fifth generation. Jacob, our son, he's six. Mia, she's four. Berkeley has always been home. We have, I have an uncle and a brother who also live here. The two kids that I mentioned, Jacob and Mia, that kind of leads us to the purpose of our addition. We want to be able to raise our kids in a more, I don't know if I'd say modern, but more practical space. We currently have three bedrooms at the house. The, what you would call the master bedroom, as you see on the plans, it's the nine foot six by 10 foot six by 12 foot eight. That's down six steps from the main level of the house on a cement slab out back. So as, obviously as you can imagine with two young kids, middle of the night, steps and not the most conducive for what we want to do with our family. That room, again, with those dimensions, we find ourselves keeping our dressers and changing in the basement and there's no room in there for anything else to, to go. We do feel that the plan, the 285 square feet is, is a pretty minimal plan and that's kind of always been our goal, is make something that was practical but not invasive or too big. The three main things that this addition will get for us is, it will allow us access to our backyard, as I described, that master suite going down. That would get freed up because now our three bedrooms will be on the same level on the main floor. Currently, to get to the backyard, we have to go through that attached garage as we talked about earlier. That or out the front of the house and around the house through gates. Another thing it will get us, and I've mentioned this a couple of times, so just to conclude, is the same level as our kids. And then again, a proper bedroom that can access dressers and changing and that kind of stuff. So that's what leads us to the variance, the eight-foot addition coming off the east side. Without that 2.38 feet, that would lead us to 5.62 feet to build, which is not practical to get what is needed up there. I believe it was noted, but we will be 10.3 feet away even with the variance to not impose on any future development that the residents on the east side want to do. Also, even after the addition, we'll still be, I believe, 37 feet away dwelling to dwelling. Again, just not to impose on the neighbors. And I believe there is a letter, is that going to be a little bit, from the east side neighbors?
Yes, all of the information that was received from public correspondences in the packets and then also on their, on their table.
Okay, and that was just full support of it. So again, in conclusion, thank you guys for your time. Berkeley has always been home, we want to make that for our kids. The other point, too, with doing a proper addition is to be able to call it our forever home and retire here. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this point, I'd like to open it up to fellow ZBA members here. Anybody have any questions or comments?
So I guess I have, I have a question that's probably more for you. So there's a bunch, it's hard to, there's a bunch of lines on this, on the site plan. So the, the distance between the dwellings is not measured from the house to the garage. The garage doesn't come into effect. Is that correct?
Are you, is, the addition is going to be on the east side?
Correct.
The west side is where the non-conformity really is on the property from that attached garage and only being two point, what did I say, two point, give me one second, 2.32 feet. And then that house on the east side was built in, or on the west side was 1940. Earlmont, 2274 Earlmont was built in 1927. Property to the, to the west was built in 1940. And that garage, it appears when the house was built in 1927, it was built that way. And then in 1940, the house to the west was built with only, you know, only a two-foot, there's only what, between, between the properties is seven, 7.7 feet between the garage and the property to the west. So they're building on, they're proposing to build on the east side.
So everything they're doing on the east side conforms with the setbacks on that side?
Yes.
So the only reason they're even here is because the west side doesn't conform?
Well, these, because with two point, they don't have a total of, it won't have a total of 15 feet for the two sides.
I see.
Because, yeah, because the west side only has 2.32 rather than the minimum five foot. And then they're bringing their current setback of the current, the existing side setback on the east is currently 16 feet, but they'll be bringing it into 10.3.
In light of that, I have absolutely no issue with this. The, the west side not even being a consideration in terms of what they're going to build on. I understand the purpose of this particular ordinance, but to me, this, this is the minimum that can be done, they said themselves. Five feet on that right side wouldn't make much practical sense or, or use for it. I would agree with that and I think it's perfectly reasonable under our standards.
Very good. So no matter what the addition, no matter what the width of that addition is, you're not going to get 10 and five, you're not going to get the 15th, right?
Well, they would have to bring, on the addition side that they're proposing to put on the east side, they would have to reduce it by 2.38 feet, which would then take it down to an eight foot, that would, like he had mentioned, eight feet minus 2.32 takes it down to below, you know, five, what, five and a half feet.
And if the garage was detached?
No, it was, it appears.
We wouldn't be here, right?
Correct. Yes. Yes, if it was detached, it would be no issue.
All right. Anybody else on the board? Seeing none, I'd like to, what I'd like to do is, I don't hate to put Joanne on the spot, but she does such a nice job of putting this together. Could you read through the five standards?
Sure.
We can have a little discussion about it.
Okay. So do you want me to do a motion or do you want me just to read through the standards?
Just the standard.
Okay. So the first standard is the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. And I get, the point would be, the dwelling was constructed in 1927. The non, the true non-conformity is on the west side, they're adding to the east side, and there will still be a fairly wide setback on that side. The second one is the need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owners. It's not them.
Right. It is, it is the action of the previous owner, but yeah.
But at the time that, that was built, that was not an issue.
But it was, was conforming at the time they built it. There was not any non-conformity. Or who knows?
Well, 1927 was prior to our ordinances, but to have an attached garage part of the dwelling only two and a half, you know, 2.32 feet, you know, if that was their standard back then, it was probably permitted back then. But since our ordinance dating back to, what, 1967 and under our current requirements are basically still the same as they were from 1967.
Okay.
The third one is strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for the permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. I think we already talked about, you know, the practicality of having just a five-foot addition versus, you know, making something a little bigger and, and giving them that extra space. So the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. Once again, they talked about, you know, not, it's not excessive, it's the minimum that they, they want, feel would, they would need. And number five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. And, and their neighbors have supported it, so I think that says a lot.
Okay. I'll ask my fellow board members here, do you believe that all five of the standards have been met here?
I do, but I think we do need to ask for members of the public if they want to speak on this issue.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Didn't know if we were getting to that motion. I'm ready to make a motion, but I also procedurally think we have to.
Anybody have any other discussions or thoughts on that? I think we're probably on the same page here.
Yeah. In answer to your question, I feel like they, the five standards have been met, so.
Okay. So if we're, after we allow the members of the public to speak, if we're going to make a, if we're going to make a motion, one way or the other, please reference the five standards. All right. Does anyone from the audience have anything they'd like to add?
Evening, Vice Chair, fellow members. I'm Dale Goodcourage, I live at 2233 Earlmont. I actually moved after 35 years from the far south end of town to the far north end of town. Fortunately enough, we have neighbors like the Naumanns across from us. We established a new home a year or so ago. It's nice to the neighborhood, we're welcome to the neighborhood, we love what they'd like to do across the street. They have an incredible family, you already heard their history. And one of the great things about having Berkeley be Berkeley is we have an incredible history and incredible people in it. This is one of the things that help keep families like the Naumanns here. We're certainly in favor of it. We've spoken to several neighbors, I believe you've received letters from a neighbor and several people signed an agreement to the possibilities. It's unevasive on the east side of the property. My daughter used to own that house to the east side of the property and some folks have moved out of that home that lived there before. They wanted to expand and the conditions of the home didn't allow that. So what a great opportunity to have the house increased, 1927, it's incredible and nice to keep it. So I appreciate your due diligence on this and thank you very much for taking the time to listen to them. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input. Do we have anyone else? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the.
Mr. Allen?
For.
Vice Chair. As far as the correspondence, the, we had, we had, in your packet, there was eight letters that were signed by, by neighbors that, let's see. It reads, Dear Members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, I am writing in support of Stephen and Jennifer Naumann, Application PBA 1224, of a dimensional variance of 2.38 feet to allow the construction of an addition to the east side of their home at 2274 Earlmont Road, Berkeley, Michigan, parcel 2517106013. So there was eight signatures from, from surrounding neighbors and that was in your packet. And then we did receive one additional that was on your, on the table. So that's a total of nine. And then we also received an email, I'm sorry, not an email, a letter that was dropped off. City of Berkeley, Zoning Board of Appeals, we are writing to you regarding application number PBA 1224, parcel 2517106013, 2274 Earlmont Road, request a dimensional variance on the east side of the home. As neighbors directly on the east side of the home, we are supportive of the Newman's request for a 2.38 foot variance. As we understand it, this variance will allow them to add on to their home in a meaningful way while also improving the visual appearance of an otherwise unutilized area. Since we moved into the neighborhood in October of 2023, they have been wonderful neighbors, taking great care of their home while being helpful and respectful. We hope this will allow the Newman's family to grow in their home and as our neighbors for years to come. We are unable to attend the August 13th meeting in person, but wanted to share our support as neighbors directly east of 2274 Earlmont Road. We hope this helps with the decision to allow them to move forward with their construction as planned. This is, thank you, Emily and Michael Staffier, residents of 2254 Earlmont Road. Those are all the public comments.
Thank you very much. I think at this point, be willing to accept a, a motion and a support on however you folks feel about this, so please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve. The application as written, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners, as we discussed. We believe that it was in conformity with the codes at the time it was built, both on the west property and the property at issue. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted purpose or, which I think is key here, will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as other property owners. And as we've heard testimony tonight, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. For those reasons, my motion is to approve. The application as written.
Do we have a support?
Go ahead.
I'll support.
Okay. We have a motion and a support. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Allen?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on tonight's agenda is Application Number PBA-13-24, Joseph Nowitzki, representing Forged Homes LLC for 3764 Tyler Avenue, parcel number 042507407037, east side of Tyler Avenue, between Edwards and Morrison Avenue, is requesting a dimensional variance of 3.42 feet to allow the construction of an addition to a non-conforming structure in the required, required distance between dwellings of 15 feet, not met to the north. Okay. Ms. Anderson?
Okay. The applicant, JSN Architecture, representing 3764 Tyler Avenue, is requesting a dimensional variance to allow the construction of a second-story addition to a non-conforming structure in the required setbacks. The distance between dwellings of 3.417 feet and the front yard setback of .208 feet. Per Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, Article 3, General Provisions, Division 5, Non-Conforming Buildings and Uses, Section 138, 154, Requirements for Non-Conforming Structures. A building may be added to or enlarged if such addition conforms to the regulations of the applicable zoning district. Such addition or enlargement shall be treated as a separate building and determining conformity to all the requirements of this chapter. Article 5, District Regulations, Division 17, Schedule of Regulations, Check, Section 138, 527B, the front yard setback shall be 25 feet or equal to the average setback of the six adjacent buildings on the same block, whichever is greater. And Section 130, 138, 527D, there shall be a distance of at least 15 feet between dwellings. 3764 Tyler was built in 1975. There was a split in 1970 with the property to the north with no record being found other than a note from a previous inspector, which I included in your packet. Dwelling was demolished in 1973. In 1974, a permit for new construction was obtained along with the permit for the property to the north, 3786 Tyler, by the same builder. There are no building plans found for either parcel or any record of a variance previously granted. I have done extensive research and have not come, I have not been able to find anything. So there was no previous variance granted for the two dwellings being built at the same time to be built at 11.583 feet between the dwellings rather than the required 15 feet. Front setback is 25 feet and the average of the six adjacent properties is 25.208 feet. The required front setback is 25.208, which is required, so a variance of .208 is being requested. The north side setback requires 15 feet between dwelling and there is 11.583 feet. A variance of 3.417 feet is being requested. The south side setback distance between dwellings is 15 feet and meets requirements. All other setbacks are met on parcel 2507407037. For a variance to be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, it shall meet For variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section one thirty-eight dash six oh six of the zoning ordinance based on findings of facts. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property and the applicant demonstrated a practical difficulty in order to grant a non-used variance. Motions for approval and denial were in your packets for your convenience.
Okay, very good.
So I have a, oh, I have a question. Um, so they're requesting to go up. Are they increasing the nonconformity in any, in any way?
No, it's it's going straight up.
Got it.
Nothing to the footprint.
And just to piggyback on that, this is akin to the several we reviewed last, uh, meeting in terms of going straight up and not adding to the footprint. It's the city's position. That's the same type of request?
Well, with every variance, I mean, it's, yeah.
That notwithstanding.
Yeah, it's straight up. There's no change in the footprint.
Okay.
But it requires a a variance to be applied to it if, you know, they have to prove there's the five standards are met.
All right. Can we have the?
Um, I think, uh.
I I was just, I was going to ask the, almost the same thing as Mr. Willner. The front is currently nonconforming also, so that would not.
It's it's off by point-two-zero-eight, which is like two and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The applicant like to come up and, uh, say a few words?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not Joe Nowitzki, so he actually had some health issues, so he couldn't be here tonight. But I work with Joe at JSN Architecture. My name is Maurice Charbonneau. And I actually have Ellie here from our office and also Evan from Forged Homes. Uh, so they might be able to answer questions and I may not be able to, um, because I was called, kind of called into this. So, um, I guess I'm willing to certainly entertain any, uh, questions you might have. One of the things that I'm not certain it was clear, I know you had discussed about whether or not the footprint was changing of the existing building, which it is not. But I, uh, one thing that I'm not certain was made kind of clear in the, is that actually, if you look at our site plan, the setback requirements are met. It's just the function of the distance between buildings. So it's really the property to the north that, you know, I know when you discuss the hardship and whether or not it's, it's really the property of the north that's nonconforming and we're not, we're asking or requesting to extend the non, the existing nonconformity, not exacerbate it. So we're not trying to make it any worse, uh, beyond that. So that, uh, that I guess would be my kind of introductory remarks. If there's anything you, any specific questions you might have, I might be able to entertain.
Feel free if you guys have any questions.
I don't have any, no.
Okay. All right. Very good. I think that.
Okay. Well, if anybody has a questions, you know, going forward during the discussion, by all means, uh, I'm certainly, you know, I'm welcome to, you're welcome to ask and I will certainly come up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. I think, so we can get used to doing this at every meeting, I think. I know where this will probably end up going, but I think we need to do the five standards and tie them in to whatever we're gonna do here. So who would like to take a turn reading it? Bring it up here. Joe, okay, Joe's gonna bring it up.
I mean, I, you know, well, we can go through it if you want, but I'm, I mean, I'm ready to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can discuss it. I'm happy to, but also in conjunction with a motion.
My, uh, my sole reason for doing this is to always have a defensible position. And, you know, it.
Carry on.
It's, yeah, we just need, we need to do it. So, okay, Joe?
All right. Uh, the need for the variance is due to the unique, um, circumstances and physical conditions of the property, which it is, and I mean, basically this home, it it meets all of the setback requirements except for a slight amount in the front. It's the distance between the property to the north that's in consideration here, I believe. Uh, the need for variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or the previous property owners. Uh, I look at it as it's, the, the, where the home was built to the north. That is what basically took it out of, out of our zoning. And so it's, I can't see it being, it's not the action of the property owner or the previous property owner of this piece of property. Strict compliance with the ordinance would unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted purpose and will render the conformity of those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. And it would, I mean, they're, they want to go straight up like we've had many of them here before. Um, they're not going to be increasing the, uh, the variance on it. Uh, let's see. The request of the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. I feel they, this is definitely the minimum they're asking for. Uh, the requested variance will not adversely affect the surrounding properties. Um, it's going straight up, so I can't see it affecting the properties any different than it already is.
All right, very good. Thank you, Joe. Um, now, is there anybody, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? I think I see one person in the audience. Take that as a no. All right, very good. How would, uh, you folks like to dispose of this?
Um, as far as correspondence, before we close the public? See, so there was, uh, one email in your packet. And then we had, um, one that was dropped off. So, let's see. We had one email that was, uh, by William Shear. He says, I received the notice for PBA one-three-two-four and read the application. I don't see a hardship. Um, a bastardized architectural outcome is not a hardship. The new owner of the property should have researched what could be done before purchasing. The house is livable, as is the owner is just trying to maximize his profit when flipping this house. As a homeowner that was denied a variance by the same board, I would expect you to not allow this. Um, that is Bill Shear at three-eight-five-five Gardner.
Okay, thank you. Great.
Does.
Yes.
Does the other one that we have need to be read?
Yep, that's why I was, yeah.
This one?
Um, yep, this one is, um, from Joe Nowitzki today. Here is the site plan with both adjacent neighbors signing off on it with no comments except for the Erica, uh, except for northern nonconforming home. Wants to replace the fence between the homes, which is no problem, he indicates. And Alyssa to the south told me the entire neighborhood discussed it and there is no one objecting to the petition, design, or resolve. So attached you, that was on your desk, uh, on your table there as far as his indications of those that had signed off on it. So those are the only two correspondence that have been received.
All right. Chair will, uh, be willing to accept a motion if there's one in here.
I, I'll move, um, to approve it and read into the, um, record in the matter of PBA thirteen dash twenty-four, three-seven-six-four Tyler Avenue, parcel number zero-four dash two-five dash zero-seven dash four oh seven dash zero-three-seven. Motion to approve the requested variances from Section one thirty-eight dash fifty, one fifty-four, Section one thirty-eight dash five twenty-seven-B and Section one thirty-eight dash five twenty-seven-D of the City of Berkeley zoning ordinance to grant a front yard setback variance of point-two-zero-eight feet where the total of twenty-eight point-two-zero-eight, uh, feet as required. That does not conform to the applicable zoning ordinance regulations and to grant a distance between dwellings variance of three-point-four-one-seven feet or a total of fifteen feet as required. That does not conform to the applicable zoning ordinance regulations based on the following findings. Number one, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. We already talked about that as being, it's already nonconforming when it was built. The need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owner uh, at the time when it was built. It was, um, that that nonconformity was not in existence. So strict compliance with, number three, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. We talked about that with, um, with, just continuing, we're not changing the footpan, plant, foot, footprint?
Footprint.
Thank you. Um, or extending it. Um, number four, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. And five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. Once again, um, neighbors immediately around the property have supported it. So for those reasons, um, I'm moving to approve that.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
I sup, I support it.
Okay. Motion and a support. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Member Creo?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer? Yes. Member Willner?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Allen?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you guys.
So much. I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right. Our next item is other business. I don't believe there is any other business.
No, no other business.
Okay. Um. Staff, board member report. Um, do we have any?
Yep. Um, so let's see. BSN A update. BSN A is up and live, so contractors, there's limited to permits, but they can pull roofing permits, porches, decks, your trade permits and your zoning certificates. Inspections can be scheduled online. Payments can be done online, so BSN A is up and running for City of Berkeley now.
Very good.
Um, let's see, included in your packet was the community development monthly report for June of twenty-twenty-four. Zoning Ordinance Steering Committee activity update. Um, so we have the, the final draft of the ordinance will be being drafted here and being submitted. There will be, uh, some public engagement. And then if, after public engagement, then it will go to the Planning Commission for public hearing and then council for adoption. So we're estimating approximately November for, for adoption. Uh, but, you know, there'll be some public engagement still that will be occurring, so people, you know, keep an eye on that. Uh, let's see. If there are any comments on any of the zoning ordinance, um, as you members have access to the Google Drive from the drafts and stuff, do not put any comments on the Google Drive any longer. If there's anything that has come up that you need to bring to our attention or anything, email either, you know, you know, Kristen and I uh, for that to be taken care of through that rather than the Google Drive. Um, alternates, we're still looking for alternates. Um, we do have one alternate that has applied that should be going to council in September to be appointed and then carry on from there. So, but we are still looking for another alternate. And, uh, next meeting for September ninth, there is no cases. And also an update on the dot gov. If you have any, if anyone's having any issues with the website, um, our emails going from Berkeley Mish dot net to Berkeley M I dot gov, if you have any issues with that, you can reach out to Stan. There was an email that was sent out to all the boards, so you should have received that. So if you have any issues, um, Stan's information is on there. And, um, that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
So the deadline's already passed for the next month's case for September?
Yes, that was, yes, Friday, yes, so.
All right. Uh, next is liaison report. Dennis?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. Do we have any comments from the public tonight? Do we have any public tonight? All right, and at this point, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are out of session. Thank you very much.
Well done, Vice Chair.